I call this meeting to an end. This is the regular session of the Mayor and Council of the City of Bisbee, County of Cochise, and State of Arizona. It will be on Tuesday, June 18th, 2019, at 7:00 PM at the City Hall Building, 915 South Tolda Bill Road, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Cornah, would you please call the board?
Councilmember Joni Giacamino?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Higgins is going to be a little bit late, but he's on his way. Mayor David M. Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Leslie Johns?
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hanson?
Here.
Mayor Protem Anna Klein is excused. City staff, Stephen Pocken, interim city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Jesus Haro, public works director, Alberti Chavet, police chief, George Castillo, fire chief, Christine Roberts, city attorney.
Thank you, ma'am. For our evocation tonight, I'd like us to take a moment of silence. You know, everybody in Bisbee is important to all of us. But once in a while, something happens that's particularly important to the Bisbee city family. And last Friday, a very valuable volunteer of ours who volunteered at the police department and other departments and throughout the city passed away, praying Richmond. And so I'd like us to take a moment and think of her, please. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks so much. Welcome, everyone. For our reference tonight, I want to make sure that on Call to the Public, Call to the Public, anybody is welcome to call the public upon sight, and these are for topics that are not on the agenda. These are for topics to bring up to the council for inclusion and future agendas and so forth. If they're not items on the agenda, instead, you would sign for the item on the agenda. So with that, I'm going to go down here with, if I could borrow a pen because I'm, and make sure that I afford everybody the opportunity for Call to the Public versus an item on the agenda. So we have Kathy Clifton, we have Call to the Public and Item 8.
Yeah, that's all I'm talking about.
Just Item 8. All right. Marco, same thing.
Mayor, can I also do a Call to the Public?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I had an issue, and then I wanted to talk about, and then I found out about Item 8. So if I can do a Call to the Public, which is not on the agenda?
Excellent.
Then I can talk twice.
Well, yeah. Or three times. Clerk Chafee, do you have Item 8? Do you have other ones also, ma'am?
Yeah, Item 8, and then D and E, and then I got confused, she tried to help me. And then I want to do a regular Call to the Public.
Yes, ma'am. And your Call to the Public will be nothing on the agenda, it will be something totally different.
And then the other part is the Items.
D and E, that's on the consent agenda?
Yeah, I did, no, whatever. It's not like, yes.
Yes, ma'am. R and S?
Yes.
Doris, was that Item 8?
No.
Okay, Call to the Public? Allison Williams, Call to the Public?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Randy, Willoughby?
No, I just jumped the gun. I wanted to sign some.
This actually is an IOU for a great amount of money. All right, may I cross your name, officer?
Yeah, I thought there might be some carbon people in there.
Okay, well, you're more than welcome. Fred, Amanda?
That would be me, Item Number 8.
Item Number 8, yes, here. And Tamara Birch, Call to the Public, can Item 8?
Yes, both, please.
All right. Thank you. Welcome, Ms. Chafee. We'll help you out so much. Okay, so we will start with Marco McCartney with Call to the Public. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, and thank you for allowing me to speak, and, as council members, I want to talk about parking in old Bisbee when there are events in town. I'm a part owner of a gallery, I'm an adult, and whenever there's an event, there's no place to park. Now, last year, I was on the board of the Pride, and so I made sure that we rented a vehicle, and we created a shuttle that went from the pit into town, and it alleviated some of the parking. And I would like the council to consider requiring any kind of big event, the Stair Pond, the Pride Day, Pirate Day, or whatever it is, because if you have a place, you can't open the stores if you can't get here, and if there were some kind of transportation. I guess it cost, I think it cost us a couple hundred bucks, but it did alleviate the traffic, and it wasn't that much. It was kind of fun. I was a driver, I had, I just went back and forth, met lots of people, and people who live here still need to park. People who want a door to open have to open the store, they have to, there's no real bus, you can't take a bus to open the store at a certain time, and then you can't take it home. We don't have bus service every 30 minutes, but a shuttle of some kind, and I think it should be left to the people who are putting on the event to arrange that. And I was hoping that the council, and I've spoken about this before, would consider making that a requirement when people apply for a license to have 3,000 or 4,000 people come into the city for a weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to, I'm challenged with this chair. I keep hitting, I just let everybody know, when I do that, it's nothing you said, it's just I hit the little bar there with my excited little hand. Yeah. Okay, Ms. Chafee, Call to the Public.
Mayor, council, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, there seems to be a lot of confusion and speculation, et cetera, about what the duties of the mayor are. So I'd like to read on the Charter what the duties of the mayor are. It's Section 2.008, and it says duties of the mayor. The mayor shall be the chairperson of the council and preside over its meetings. The mayor may make in secret motions and shall have a voice and vote in all council proceedings. The mayor shall be recognized as the head of the city government for all ceremonial purposes and by the governor for purposes of martial law, and shall have executive but no regular duties. The mayor shall appoint members to the various committees, boards, commissions, and after official notice to the public and with the consent of council. Section 14.06 deals with violations of the Charter, city ordinances, enforcement of violations. Now, everybody seems to be confused as to what the mayor's duties are. I think people aren't going into the Charter, they're not reading our Charter. They can get the Charter, I believe, from Ashley? Did they get that from you?
They can request certain things, yes. Documents, absolutely. And it's online.
Okay. There's a lot in the Charter that people can find out. I'm really into the Charter, to see what we need, what we can do, et cetera. And until the time when we're going to revise the Charter, which is supposed to be this year, we need to go by that, this Charter we have now. And there's been a lot of violations, by many. So I think we need to start going into the Charter, start thinking about what kind of revisions need to be made, and I think y'all would really enjoy seeing and knowing what our town, what our regulations are, what our laws are, et cetera, and know what we do and what we don't. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor, Council, Public. I have not seen any issue about sewer and garbage or sewer on the agenda. I just wanted to remind everybody that dealing with sewer increases cannot happen until there's a comprehensive revision of what the sewers are charged for and how the costs are going to be next.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City staff, Mr. Pocken, and the public. I'm Allison Williams, I'm the program coordinator of the Copper Queen Library, and I just wanted to let everybody know a few things. Summer reading program, we are in our third week, and we're really excited, we've expanded our programs, we've doubled them to include a summer reading program at the Annex, which is on Thursdays 1 to 3. Registration is necessary, but you can sign up for just one week or one event, you don't have to sign up for the whole eight weeks. And so if you know any kids who want something to do, also, our sponsor, Freeport MacCoran, has allowed us for the fourth year in a row to give a book a week per child every week of the program, and that is for all for summer reading, R2 preschool and R2 K through 12. And I also am very happy to say that for the Mark Kelly event, we have made it all ages, we've opened up registration to adults without children, so we have allowed all the children to register. We do have space for adults, and we really believe in that you all are teenagers at heart and want to meet an astronaut. That's June 27, 3 to 4 PM. If you want to sign up, just give us a call at 432-4232, or come into the front desk at the Copper Queen Library. And really quickly, I just want to say that, give you a preview, that July 12, we are going to be doing all-day programming for the Bisbee 17 with PBS, Arizona Public Media, and POV, as well as Robert Green, so save the date. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Tamara Birch, Ward 3 to 15, Hartford Road. And I'm here tonight for various reasons, but my off-agenda item is, like we did for the wire, razor wire down the border, I might be interested in having on the agenda for Bisbee, we're looking for cities in Arizona to have a resolution stating that we support ERA. It's long overdue, we need women to be equal to men in all ways, and I appreciate your support for this, I will give you a letter with details. I'll just bring it in to Ashley. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a matter of statement that is being worked on, there will be a resolution, there will be provided a resolution. For council's approval. I think we're caught up on Call to the Public. Now, with that, we're going to go to accounts payable. And do we have in motion accounts payable?
As soon as I get my glasses on, I. I move to approve accounts payable on the amount of $317,127.97.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have questions? Hearing none? All those in favor of paying accounts payable, signify by stating aye. Aye. Opposed, same side? Motion passes unanimously. We'll move on to the consent agenda, Items A through J. Item A, approval of the minutes of the special session of Mayor and Council held on June 10th, 2019, at 5:30 PM. B, approval of the minutes of the regular session of Mayor and Council held on June 4th, 2019, at 7:00 PM. C, approval of the minutes of the work session of Mayor and Council held on June 3rd, 2019, at 5:30 PM. D, approval of the minutes of the regular session of Mayor and Council held on June 19th, 2017, at 6:00 PM. E, approval of the minutes of the special session of Mayor and Council held on May 24th, 2017, at 5:30 PM. J, approval of a park facility ride-away use permit for the use of brewery gulch with Bisbee Circus Bazaar, and that's B-I-Z-A-R-R-E, to be held on Sunday, September 1st, 2019, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 AM.
I think you skipped the whole watch.
Aye, approval of a park facility ride-away use permit for the use of brewery gulch for the 4th of July monkey and drilling contest on Thursday, July 4th, 2019, from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. H, approval of a park facility ride-away use permit for the Bisbee Rotary Club for the use of Coal Avenue, Bisbee Road, Rubbe, and Arizona Street for the 4th of July parade on Thursday, June 4th, 2019, July 4th, 2019, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Do we get them on now? Take a second.
Did you need a G and F?
Oh, boy. The computer jumped to the next page, I apologize. Approval of the resignation of Peyton Dean, which is Item F. Approval of the resignation of Peyton Dean for the Parks and Rec Committee. G, approval of a park facility ride-away use permit for the use of Vista Park for movies in the park on Saturday, June 22nd, 2019, from 3:00 PM to 11:00 PM. Took us a very long time, but we got there, I apologize. I will ask for Items D and E to be pulled, since Ms. Chafee wishes to address those items. Do we have anyone else that wants to discuss any of the items? For anybody that is wondering why we're looking at minutes from 2017, they basically burned up the fire. And so we've had to go back and recreate.
Right, recreate packets.
And so it's taken a very, very long time, and the clerks have worked very hard on that. I think we're caught up. Or we're not caught up.
We're completely caught up.
We're completely caught up. And so, anyway, that's the reason that we've had to slip those in every medium for quite a while. So with that, do we have a motion? Do we approve of the consent agenda, Items A, B, C, F, G, H, I, J? Thank you. Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Ms. Cornah?
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item D, approval of the minutes of the regular session of Mayor and Council held on June 19th, 2017, at 6:00 PM.
I think that you pretty much tried to explain it, I just don't quite understand how you can recreate the minutes, okay? I went back and I looked, just like to find an audio, all right? When I went on the audio, it didn't come out at all. So that's what I'm concerned, how you're recreating this. Are you going back to just memories?
Well, you're asking the wrong person.
There may be a video that was available, I don't remember exactly which was available. Audios sometimes are available, or the video, we might have had to go off the video that we upload on YouTube.
Okay, so when are these minutes actually getting typed up?
Those ones, we lost the entire packet and everything in the file, in the fire, and then realized, oh my goodness, that they had never been approved, so we went back and addressed the issue.
Okay, and you've got the information from where, though?
Like I said, it could be either an audio or a video that we had available.
Okay, you had available.
Yes.
When I looked out there, I didn't see anything.
Did you look on YouTube to see if the video was available?
I'll look back on YouTube.
It may be there.
Because it doesn't make any sense that these are all getting approved now. I mean, that's a year ago, that's two years.
Right. And again, they were lost in the fire, we realized late that they had never been approved.
How did you discover that these weren't even worth nothing?
Going back through records, we have, we keep books of all the agendas and minutes, and going back through that, once we made our move here, that's when it was noticed.
Okay. Well, I also, in my opinion, I don't think that the new, the new council members could be bothering them, because they were here, so they don't know.
Thank you, ma'am. Is your comment the same, or?
Yes, it's the same. Is that thing for Ethan?
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
I move that we approve all of the consent items D and E.
I second.
Ms. Cornah?
Councilmember Giacamino?
I have a question, if I, with that statement, can we, since we live here?
You have a D and E, council.
I'm just saying, hey, because I don't have.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes accordingly. Under new business, discussion and possible approval of resolution R-1906, adopting the tentative budget for the city of Bisbee for fiscal year 2019, as well as give notice at the time of, for public hearing the taxpayers to the adoption of the budget. Mr. Pocken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to refer most of the presentation on the budget tonight to finance director, Carrie Bagley, who did most of the work on the budget. And just for the, a little piece of legal business about budgets, this is the tentative budget. We actually pass a tentative budget, and then later on, we will pass a final budget. The interesting thing about the tentative budget is that under state law, if council adopts the tentative budget as presented tonight, that locks in expenditures, okay? They can't come back with the final budget and add more spending to the plan. So tonight is a very important night for a budget, because once that's done, the total amount is locked in.
So this is the resolution to about the tentative budget for 2019-20, for a total amount After the changes from the last work session, we ended up reducing the use of funding by about $200,000, almost back to where we started, or before all the changes.
Thank you. Questions, council? Do we have a motion, council?
I move to approve a resolution R-1906, adopting the tentative budget for fiscal year 2019 and 2020.
Thank you, we have a motion, we have a second. Do we need to include the, hold up your hands?
So a bottom hearing is the next council meeting on July 2nd.
Good.
And that's also to approve the tax, maybe?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
And my husband?
May I, may I ask, if you could revise your motion to include the public hearing, it will be on July 2nd, 2019?
I move to approve resolution 9-1906, amended, adopting the tentative budget for fiscal year 2019 and 2020, and also for the public hearing, which will be held on July 2nd at the council meeting.
Second. Do we have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornah?
Councilmember Giacamino?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, discussion of possible approval of PSRPS pension funding policy. This is a requirement by the state of Arizona for every city to come up with a policy, and this is, the floor is yours, Ms. Cornah.
So this is a PSRPS pension funding policy that the state legislator passed in 2018, and it's a policy that we have to renew annually or revise annually. So it basically needs to explain how we're going to pay down our unfunded liability. Right now, our plan is just to pay per the PSRPS schedule, but that can always be changed in the future.
Okay. Questions, council? Hearing none, do we have a motion? I move to approve the PSRPS one, pension funding policy.
I second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of approving the PSRPS pension funding policy, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Motion carried unanimously. Item number five, discussion of possible approval of a transfer of city property located 822C at Pace Avenue, pursuant to the request of Mr. Todd Conklin and Mr. Peter Gardner. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Okay, this is really short, I was going to be loud. I feel like I'm going to take a lot more time over a much smaller issue. What we have before us is a request from a member of the public assistance, this being Mr. Todd Conklin, looking to buy approximately 737 square feet of city property. Now, it is city right-of-way, and it's located adjacent to his property of 822C Pace Avenue. The intention here is to create additional private parking spaces. For everyone that's familiar with Pace Avenue, it dead-ends, and there's parking pressure up there, the Schoolhouse Inn is up there, there's other businesses, and there's the park. So... So, we do run into parking problems. In general, in the planning world, we don't like selling right-of-way, because we might need it someday. But as noted, Pace Avenue doesn't go anywhere, it won't ever go anywhere, so it's not going to be wide, we don't need the land for additional roadway. Public parking would be great, however, that's really not likely to happen for a variety of reasons, of course, the council's familiar with, so private parking is better than no parking at all. Staff did send public notice, did notify the property, relatively noticed in the newspaper. We did receive no public comment on this request. So, staff's position is that it should be supported. It is a piece of property that's doing the city no good, and could do a private citizen good, puts a little money in the coffers, and does pay some parking pressure off. It's one of those situations that is common. People believe they own up to the road, common misconception. Mr. Conklin was actually already excavating to create the parking spaces. When he discovered he didn't own the property, immediately came in to rectify. Based on the location of the property, it doesn't touch any property other than his, there's no other legitimate public claim to the property, so there's no requirement for public auction under city code. Staff has used the $3 square foot that has been the precedent for parking in Old Bisbee, which the applicant has been more than willing to pay. The planning commission did hear it on May 15th. There was only one member of the public who spoke, other than Mr. Conklin. Mr. Sky did speak in support of the request, and they unanimously approved it with two conditions. One, that there be an easement granted to the city, because there are some sewer manholes nearby, just a blanket utility easement, just in case there's any utility lines under there that do need to be reached. And because it's cutting into a hill, and his garage is right above that, the commission did require a condition, that a retaining wall be built underneath that garage to keep it out of right-of-way, which is something the applicant was planning on doing to begin with. So, in short, here's the item, and staff does recommend approval of this.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions, Mr. Gardner?
Thank you, sir. Well done, others.
Do we have a motion? I move to adopt 0-19-04, authorizing the sale and transfer of city property located near 822C Pace Avenue to Todd Conklin.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Corral?
Councilmember Giacominio.
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins.
Aye.
Councilmember Johns.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number six, discussion of possible approval of the agreement for continued support between the city of Bisbee and the Bisbee Science Exploration and Research Center, Inc., for use of space at the Queen Mine Tour building. Melanie Green, Bisbee Science Exploration Research Center guru.
Whoa.
Welcome.
Is there a paycheck that comes along?
Yeah, right. That's in lieu of a paycheck.
Thank you, I'll take it. Good evening, council and staff. It's exciting time for the Bisbee Science Lab, otherwise known as the Bisbee Science Exploration and Research Center, commonly known as the ZERC. We have had an amazing, successful time since our grand opening on February 1st. As most of you know, the Science Center has been kicked off by, with a USDA grant to help us get started. That grant, because at the time, the ZERC was not a nonprofit, was issued to the city, and the city has been the pass-through agency for this grant. That grant will expire in September, but we've been working hard to develop additional funding. One of the things that you may have remembered from the early feasibility study done in 2018, was the long-term goal was to partner with the Mine Tour to make the Science Center and the Mine Tour work together and produce a lot of excitement for families, children, everybody. And in asking for this agreement, we feel like we're well in our way toward that ultimate goal. So, before you is a two-page agreement that's been looked at many times by everyone concerned, but I want to give you just a brief background on how this came about. Our intention was directed to Doug Brand first at the Queen Mine Tours, the manager. We figured if he wasn't interested, then there was no sense in pursuing that. And Doug can jump in whenever he wanted to, or he feels like it, but I'll say that his interest was exciting. He was very interested in the potential for both the Science Center and the Mine Tour to benefit from this partnership. So, in going down some of the nitty-gritty details, well, I should say, we followed up then with city staff, and the, we had a work session for council members to discuss it. We, of course, went to our own board to make sure that everybody was comfortable with this plan, where we got approvals all around. So, in doing the, in laying out the details, basically what we're asking for is the use of a minimum of 768 square feet at the Mine Tour, the back quarter, I think it's, I was calling it a third, but I believe it's closer to a quarter, that's underutilized at this time to present our exhibits and our interactive activities, so that the visitors coming to the Queen Mine Tour, as well as the public, can experience that in that space. We also would like to have this commence on September 1st. Our current lease at 24 Main Street expires on October 14. However, with the recent call for exhibits, we plan for an opening reception for new exhibits on September 14th. So, we'd like to have that opening at the Queen Mine Tour. We think that'd be a great way to announce our move and to show some new exhibits. We, the Bisbee Science Lab and its owner entity, will assume the cost of getting into that space. Doug and Frank Davis have been working together to look at the electrical. We're happy to provide any electrical upgrades that are needed, once the council approves, should the council approve the arena. We had originally intended to fully staff the Bisbee Science Lab during the Queen Mine Tour operations hours. That intention was predicated on receiving a sizable grant from the Howery Foundation. We have not received that grant, unfortunately. So, our ability to do that is no longer feasible at this time, until we get additional funds. However, in talking with Doug and the city manager and others, we feel like we can offer static exhibits when we are unable to provide staffing, therefore relieving any Mine Tour staff of the need to babysit or to provide oversight for any of our exhibits. And then, of course, as we improve our funding, we can improve our staffing. We have, we've discussed retail, and Doug has agreed that any retail we have would have to be branded, so that we don't compete with any of the retail that they have. As you know, the retail operations are a significant income generator, and we don't want to compete with them. Mostly what we have been selling are T-shirts that have the Bisbee Science Lab logo on them. We agreed to take care of any utilities or installation of additional utilities such as internet service. The way that we would work that is, we would pay the average monthly rate that we're currently paying at 24 Main, until we can get a trend of utility expense increases that we would then cover under the same utilities. We don't anticipate having a separate utility, etc. So, continuing with that, we would also have to do the same with insurance. If the council approves this, we'll be meeting with the Queen Mine Tours insurance provider. They have a separate insurance policy than the general city liability, etc., that is currently covered in 24 Main Street. So, those insurance premiums would have to be determined, and then we would pay the difference. As you can see, we're trying, our effort is not to create any additional costs to the city. I think that the last thing is that we don't intend to make any changes that would significantly alter your current or future lease with Freeport for the use of the Mine Tour property. Freeport has indicated that they understand that the building belongs to the city, and what happens in the building is up to the city to decide. So, while they've reviewed this agreement, they have no significant changes or comments to make with that understanding. And number nine, we would be responsible for any changes to or additions to signage on the property or leading to the property. And the last item is that any, any items in this agreement can be amended, so long as both parties are in agreement and that those changes are made in right. So, with that, I would like to thank the city for their willingness to hear our proposal and to consider it. I think this is a real good opportunity to provide some new and exciting changes at the Mine Tour that may draw additional visitors, but also give some really good reasons for locals to keep returning to the Mine Tour. Are there any questions?
I have a few.
And if you have questions, Mr. Gardner?
Yes. Can I ask you?
No, this is mainly for you. My first question is, did you guys ever receive your nonprofit?
Yes, we did.
So, with that said, any kind of assistance that we're giving them, we're now, in a sense, showing preference to one nonprofit or the others, and we have a multitude of nonprofits in our town. You talked about your utilities, and you've listed the electricity, and what else did you? Your internet, like you said, what about sewer and garbage, and what about rent? Because I remember, I'll let you answer that in a second. I remember when you first proposed this, you knew that your rent was going to be going up on Main Street, and that's what you kept on about, you guys were going to go after grants. And it was my understanding, and almost other people, that you had been planning on staying on Main Street to sell out of there and look for your grants to cover. So, now you're wanting to move in and just pay electricity and internet, is that what you're saying?
We want to pay our utilities, our share, our proportionate share of any additional expenses that the city would incur, including utility services, insurance, any improvements that we would anticipate making.
So, then utilities would include water, electric, sewer and dirt?
Yes, they certainly could.
And would it, well, could or will, that's my question.
All right.
Also, are you going to be paying rent?
There is been no rent included in this agreement.
Why not? Again, the conflict that I'm seeing here is, if we don't charge you rent, why are we not helping the multitude of other nonprofits in our town, and just being a devil's advocate here? That's my biggest question. And if I, I would like you to define, you made the statement, underutilized the space. What do you mean by underutilized up at Queen Mine Tour?
In my discussions with Doug about the space that might be available toward this, we looked at the entire space. The space that I understand from Doug, that goes least utilized is that back quarter, where there is a square set, a motor, a temporary wall, and dioramas. Dioramas Doug will be keeping to look at reutilizing in some way.
So, my next question then is, when you relocate all your stuff into this area, what happens when the Queen Mine Tour has a double, double train setup of people of 70-plus, where are they all going to go? And if you guys aren't there, what's going to keep those people from messing with an unsupervised setup?
The hope is, like some Ouizians do, they offer things that don't have to be attended or provided oversight, so static exhibits, anything like our virtual reality, which does need to have attendance and oversight, would be made offline, and so put away when we're not there, so that they would not be available.
And who will be responsible for doing that?
I will take that responsibility.
And what grants have you guys been awarded so far this year?
This year? Let's see, we've gotten a grant from the, from Sloman and Danielle Bouchere, not from their foundation, but from individuals.
How much was that grant?
$16,200, if I recall.
$16,000?
$200. And we have a $5,000 grant from Freeport that paid for virtual reality installations and training. And by the way, the Bouchere money was used for staffing, on startup staffing. And then we had from last year, but it carries into this year, APS money in the amount of $5,000 that was used for exhibits. We have $10,000 from the organization RAIN, Rural Activation and Innovation Network, that goes for general operating and administrative services, covers expenses like copies, supplies that we need for day-to-day operations, to give an example, Sloman supplies, along with a lot of other stuff. And then, I'm doing this from memory, so forgive my stalling here, trying to think of all of it. Well, the USDA grant has been until September 30, and that was for $49,900, and that's what's been paying our rent, along with some other costs associated with that.
So, technically, that's the only one that you have for rent?
Yes, at this present time.
And again, had you pursued any others to pay for rent, knowing that you were going to?
Absolutely, we are constantly looking. In fact, we just wrote for the Howery Foundation, we've written for the Cox Foundation, we'll be writing for a number of smaller, the usual smaller things like Walmart Home Depot loads for the smaller, but then we're also going to write, I presume, we'll get board approval to write to Freeport for their annual Bisbee program, their foundation program. And then we have a list, when, I think when we were doing our feasibility study, we developed a list of potential funding organizations, and I think included about 20 to 25 likely sources, so we'll be working down the list.
So, hypothetically speaking, if you don't get, which we all know, the grant process is extremely competitive, what happens then?
I suppose they will look for you and others to help donate to make up that difference, but realistically, I think any organization that doesn't make its own way with foundation and grant-giving ultimately has to fold.
So, you made the comment that this last year, you guys all used to sell T-shirts?
That's what we sold the most of at Christmas. We sold some science kits, mostly for children, that people use for Christmas gifts. Our sales have not been robust.
And what is your average attendance fee?
We, we're open Thursday through Sunday now, from 10 until 4 on Thursday and Friday, and 11 until 5 on Saturday and Sunday, and I would say our average attendance is probably around 30 to 40 a day.
So, how are you going to alleviate parking up there? If you have, I'm assuming you're intending on bringing in field trips and such?
We haven't done field trips, mostly because our space currently on 24 Main, if you bring a classroom of 22 children into that space, it's too chaotic, not only for people trying to oversee it, but for the kids themselves, because we don't have 22 separate things for people to engage in, and so there's a lot of line waiting. What we've encouraged is for classes to divide up if they're coming, so if they're going to visit the Mine Tour, let some of the kids attend there, bring down some kids. We had classes of, the Boys and Girls Club has been our biggest group, and they bring attendance time, which we've been able to accommodate. But I will say too, that having moved our maker space, our teeter space, and our science priority program, which is what most local kids attend, those have moved out to the San Jose Middle School, along with where the library annex is, and that's where most of those kids attend those programs.
And you mentioned your insurance. What's wrong with the insurance that you have right now?
Nothing. We're actually under city insurance, because the city has the lease on 24 Main Street, and uses the USDA grant to pay that. And I believe Carrie gives us a quarterly or semi-annual bill that we pay.
Okay, thank you.
I do want to indicate that... I do want to indicate that for disclosure that I sent on the board of directors at the SIR, and without pay like no one, and so my action is not a conflict of interest. But I did want to make that public that I haven't involved with this. So therefore, I have a little bit of back knowledge in dealing with Mr. Graham on this and so forth. And he can speak for himself, but he, the conversations I've had with him was this was a positive mood move because it would bring potentially more people to the Mind Tour, but also that they would complement each other with the kids and so forth, having more to do.
I would like to say too, because I think it's a valid concern, we don't think that 30 and 40 visitors is sufficient for what we're trying to do. With the established visitorship that the Mind Tour has, and knowing that a significant number of those visitors are children, that is our target market. And having access to that target market, we don't charge anything. It's not an extra fee for anyone. But it does allow us to get a larger audience for what we're trying to do, including visitors, but also locals. And what locals don't attend at the San Jose Middle School can certainly still come. And it's a way for us to build a foundation that we're working very hard to do.
Yeah, weren't you guys expected to have so many per year visitors? Wasn't there a projected number that they expected you to have?
They expected that with the feasibility study that showed a, the feasibility study that we had done showed a partnership between the Queen Mind Tour and the Bisbee Science Lab, or the nonprofit. At some point in the discussions, when the discussions between Edda Mine and the city about what to do in the future with the Mind Tour, this was one of the partnerships that came up. So those numbers are projected based on Mind Tour numbers as being part of this partnership, not 24th Main Street numbers.
Because under my understanding, that first year you were expected to have so much and put stuff on for sale to raise so much money in that first year. That was the understanding from the presentation, and that's why I'm asking.
For the official USDA grant?
Just in general, for that first year, to get yourself sustainable, I guess.
I don't recall making that in the presentation, but I'd certainly go back and look.
Okay. And I guess response to your comment, the perception of being on board also isn't real good. That's why I refuse myself on both items that was on the board, KDRP and LEED, for the simple fact that you may not benefit from it, but it's the perception.
And I will state that, not arguing, and that's fine. Prior city attorneys have indicated that all members of the council will vote on all items unless they are in conflict. And that if you're not in conflict, you don't refuse yourself. So I just indicate that, what was said. Mr. Hawke, do you have something to say?
No.
It got said? Okay, Mr. Graham, do you have anything to say?
No.
All right. Does anybody have any questions, Mr. Graham?
I wanted to talk to Doug for just a second.
Speak up. You thought you were...
What do you mean? No, I just wanted to make sure, Mr. Graham, that you didn't have any concerns that haven't been addressed that you could maybe talk to.
We had several things with Mr. Parker and Valerie, sure. This is a way for the city to kind of control the vesting on this. And that's probably the greatest advantage here. Because of the way with the Freeport East, et cetera, either we can let it be dictated that way, or the city can control the vesting in that. I think that's important here to recognize. It is important for the business to have some change. We can't remain static. So this is part, yeah, there's been some rough patches going through. And I expect that. I think for the long-term health, this is going to be necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have anything else?
No.
Thank you, ma'am. Do we have another motion?
I move to approve the agreement of continued support between the City of Bisbee and Bisbee Science Activation and Research Center, supporting the use in proportion between Mind Tour facility and Bisbee Science that I have outlined in the agreement.
I second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornett?
Councilmember Giacomo?
May.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Councilmember Johns?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye. That's fourth one.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number seven, discussion of possible approval to submit an application to the Arizona Department of Health Services for a rate increase of ambulance services. Mr. Chief George Castillo. And the ambulance group.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Staff and People and Tenants. Before you, we're seeking your approval for a rate increase for ambulance services through the Department of Health Services. Lieutenant, we're all VSNR, who's also our EMS coordinator. He's been working very hard on his project. And he'll discuss what needs to be done for this to be done.
Thanks, Chief. You're done?
Welcome.
Mayor, Council. So pretty much what we need to move forward with the ambulance service rate increase is that we need to show the state that we have brought it to the city's attention. And we need approval from you guys before we can continue to move forward on any things. Pretty much, I'll go into a little bit of detail and a little bit of history. We haven't asked for a rate increase since June 3, 2013. The list is available online through ADHS. Ninety percent of the departments in Arizona have all asked for a rate increase and been pretty successful within the last two years. Ninety percent were, and were back since 2013. We can also ask for a rate increase every six months. So we're kind of working behind the eight ball on that. And we're trying to, what we are going to try to ask for, just to give a little detail, is we're going to try to match Douglas's rates. And the rates for ALS and BLS, which stands for Advanced Life Support and Basic Life Support, is 1,341 and 46. Granted, this is what we're going to try to go and ask for. It's not guaranteed that we'll get that because the state also has to take into consideration our call volume, our transfer rate, our population. There's a lot of factors that goes into it, but we're going to try for that. They can either say, you guys are asking for too much, or you guys are asking for too little, and you can ask for more. A lot goes into that, but before we even get to any of that, we need approval from you guys to go ahead and proceed forward and try to get a rate increase.
Lieutenant, for the other, for people watching, what is our current rate?
Our current rate from June 3, 2013 is 947, $947.87. And that's for both Advanced Life Support and Bisbee.
So any questions? And who did you have to roll the chief? Do we have a motion?
I move to submit an application to the Arizona Department of Health Services for a rate increase of ambulance services.
I'll say. Thank you, we have a motion, we have a second. And thank both of you. Others in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Close, same side. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Dr. Murphy. Item eight, discussion of possible direction of staff on the possible sale of the Old Bisbee Post Office, First Floor. Provide a small amount of history. On April 16, I was on vacation and received an email from a gentleman indicating that he represented investors that bought post offices around the country. And wanted to provide, asking us, me as mayor on behalf of the city, to, if we wanted to sell our post office. I replied back to him that if he actually had an offer to bring forward, that I would provide that offer. But that he needed to understand that we don't sell property. It goes up to bid, just like tonight was an example of that piece of property. When it's a certain amount, you don't, like, I explained to them that, or him, that if we said, yeah, you know, we're interested in that, then there would be bidding that would take place. He said that they were very used to that. They dealt with cities across the country. So he did provide a written offer on the 2nd of May. On the 2nd of May, I emailed and I spoke with our interim city manager and our council, indicating that I'd received this offer and that I believed I was compelled to bring it forward to the public because it was an offer to, like, tonight, buy property. I was informed that that was the case, that if I had not brought it forward, then there could be hell to pay, I think was the quote. On, I let the gentleman know that he would, on the 21st, that would be on the agenda on the 21st. Other business came up, and so we kept it off the agenda. I then informed them that I could not get it on the agenda until tonight. And at that point, they said, that's fine. The language that had been present in that was extended until after tonight. And I think that it might be of interest or important, it certainly is to me, that I have attempted through the barrage of calls, emails, social, and Facebook, everything else, to not indicate a position on this. Because doing so would potentially be a violation of the open meeting law, or open to the open meeting law because other members of the council use those same venues. And so it is before us at this particular time. And I would state that I think it's a terrible idea. But that I, as mayor, was given a bona fide offer. And it's my job to bring it forward. So that's why it has my name on it. It doesn't mean that I think that this is the thing to do because I don't, nor have I ever. But it is my thing to do to bring it forward for consideration so that the council can make a decision based on the input from their constituents. So that's why it's here. So with that, we still have a number of people, do they still want to speak? Sure.
Well, I feel much better about that. I'm Kathy Clifton, I live in Warren. I worked here about 10 years, and I'm on board of the Friends of the Catholic Library. So I'll address the practical part, folks. There are so many things, like, for example, the elevator on the first floor is the primary access to the library for the majority of people who either can't or don't want to walk up the steep stairs to the front door, which is not a small thing. That elevator also is what makes the place handicap accessible, which is important. So I could just see all kinds of nightmares about the use of the elevator. And I could do what the Friends use bookstores on that floor. The library is probably, if not the community center for Bisbee, one of the community centers for Bisbee. So it's, the building is on the National Register of Historic Places. And it's part of our heritage. So I'm so glad because selling off our heritage piece by piece is not going to work. So, thank you.
That would be a preaching to the choir moment. Ms. McCartney?
I'm McCartney, I live in 60 from Old God in San Jose. Mayor of Council. Everybody, well, you know, maybe it's all superfluous, but I really think selling off our heritage is the worst idea I've ever heard in my life. And I didn't even think about the elevator. But the entire post office is a community center. To sell it to someone, it's kind of like, somebody offered me a million dollars for my nose, and I cut it off. Now, I don't have a nose, you know? You can't, you can't, you can't do that. Owning prop, you own it, it's our building. We can't sell it. Anyway, I strongly urge you to vote against that. Thank you.
And I might indicate there will be not, there is not a vote tonight. This is direction to staff, and the direction to staff would be to, you know, proceed with negotiations. So just to let you know there. And with that, Ms. Chapeau? Please, please speak again. There you go. Remember, you're on TV.
Why not? Oh, yeah.
Fishman.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was just concerned with that, because it's in the historic district. And then about the elevator, because we all know, I've darn near crashed to the floor before, out of handicap. And I was concerned that you had gotten that offer because none of us knew how it had happened, what had happened. And it kind of riled people right up. I'm truly hoping that yourself and council really significantly read and looked at this offer. I mean, it was like, I read parts of it, and I was very concerned. This is part Bisbee. This is what Bisbee is. I was, I was sad when I saw that, you know? Think the way, you know, our post office is selling it off. I don't care how much money they're giving it there, you know? And how came about that, she really helped you and whatnot. So please, consider it, it keeps a part of Bisbee, you know? We'd really like to have that, right? You know, we don't know, we have road rust that's going to make us sell our property another part of Bisbee. You know, we don't want to sell any parts of us off. We won't be Bisbee anymore. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. We can agree on a lot of things, but when a valid offers come in, it is, if they come to me, it's my job to bring them forward to staff and the city council. Fred?
I'm good.
You're good? Thanks, Fred. Tamara Burge? You're not good.
I don't know.
Okay.
I'm pretty good. I can be bad, terrible. So Tamara Burge, just, I may always know it's not all the superfluous, you know? But basically, thank you for, Mayor, for not wanting to do this because Old Bisbee Post Office is in our hearts, in our bloods, in our spirits, and it just can't be destroyed. I was just wanting it to be served for our next generations. I was just confused as to the procedures that was going to be put up and how it was going to be offered, and who you talk to, and what statutes and procedures it would go through if you did, you know, decide to do it. So I'm so relieved, and thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Council?
I, I got calls from old friends, I haven't heard from anyone.
I don't think there's a soul on this council who wanted this to happen. And I think we all got harassed all week by everyone in town who didn't want this to happen.
I do have a question. You said you contacted council, what was the date and how did you contact us? Because this was the first I've heard about it.
Legal council.
Okay, so my guess, my question is, if you heard about it on April 14, how come we weren't prepared even when we got back to communication? Just to let us know what was coming up because when it hit, the phone calls were insane, and I was kind of blindsided.
Well, the phone calls were insane as soon as it hit, the public being.
Right, I know, but what I was saying is it would have been nice if we'd have a heads up as a council person so that I would have known, you know, other than be blindsided because, you know, I am totally against it, obviously, but it would have just been nice to have been, you know, since you knew about it.
All right, you and I can talk about it offline.
Sure. And I am also against it, just to go on.
Well, then, fine. I think it's safe to say that we will not be providing any direction, and with, I will be sending an email probably tonight indicating that council and citizens of Bisbee are not interested in the sale of the post office. Go out tomorrow and take the latest. Item number nine, discussion of possible approval of a contract for publishing services slash newspaper record with Bisbee Observer. Ms. Cornetto?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Before you tonight is the annual contract for newspaper record, which we, which we go out to bid for every year. The only bid we received was from the Bisbee Observer, and the price is $3.75 per column for publication. Like I said, they're the only ones we received, so we kind of have to have a newspaper record required.
So you're saying this is kind of like a.
Kind of.
She's in the back of the room, sorry.
I know, it's a price. It's a wonderful price.
I can see the editorial if I say. All right, counsel, do we have any questions? I move to approve the contract publishing services slash official newspaper record with Bisbee Observer.
Second.
I third.
Obviously, some people want their name in the paper. We have a motion, and we have a second. All those in favor, signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Cornetto. City managers report, Mr. Hawke.
Thank you, everybody. Good evening. Just a few items to report this evening. When I was assigned here back at the end of March, there were a big number of vacant positions, and many of them positions at the management level, and we have already filled a couple of them since I've been back. I want to announce two positions which have been recently filled. A very key position for me was a position of personnel director. Not only is it directed that we have one in the city charter, but as far as doing a proper legal and moral job of hiring best people in a city manager form of government that's defined as based on merit, it takes a lot of work to do that. 20 years ago, you know, I didn't have an HR director. In 20 years, the laws have changed so much that we can't afford not to have an HR director. Recently, HR director was lost to Ken, and so when I arrived and didn't have one, I enlisted the services of the one person on staff who had some HR background and has performed admirably in that role, and therefore she has been promoted, personnel director, Mr. Joel Henders. As you can tell, she's pretty popular, and she has the talent to see. Also, and as counsel is aware, the first major hire that we made was to place a new public works director on payroll. It was a deep hole in our operations and a very key position, very key leadership position in our community. And we felt, we filled that position with Jesus Harrow, who's been here now for, I believe, six weeks, Jesus?
Yes.
And so I'm going to introduce him again. Stand up and be ready. But key to his operation is the operations manager position. Jesus is charged with overall leadership and overall supervision and overall management of the public works' many divisions and dealing with the engineering aspects of public works, of which there happen to be many, as he gets through town sizing up and trying to figure out how quickly we can fix all the retaining laws that are failing Old Bisbee. It is a significant issue that he is dealing with. So we did the best we could to find a good operations manager for him. We solicited applications, we interviewed people, and we didn't have to look any further than our own backyard and promoted to physician of operations managers Matthew. I just happened to have been the one to hire Matthew eight years ago when I was working here. He was only five foot eight then. He obviously took his protein pills. Couple of other items, I just wanted to give you an update. The, we had, Joelle and I had some time to discuss contract matters for a city manager contract this afternoon with the designated person that you identified last evening. We have sent her a draft contract for her review, and hopefully we'll get that back tomorrow with an approval. At that point, the approval, the approved draft will be submitted to the city attorney for legal review. Since the model for that contract was my city manager's contract from 15 years ago, drafted by John McKinnon, I don't expect it to be too much of a problem. But hopefully it will come back from legal in ample time to be placed on the council agenda for July the 2nd for everybody's approval. And in our conversations with Mr. Ruder earlier today, it's apparent that she'll be available to start working sometime just after mid-July. So that will be approximately two to three weeks before my contract expires, so it'll be an ample opportunity for us to help her get oriented in an appropriate fashion. So that's very good news, it's still moving along and doing so briskly. And then the last thing I have is the ever-present water meter issues, one of which has been going on for a couple of years. The two-inch meter at the cemetery that hasn't been used since Matt Burney was five foot eight has been removed, and with it, the bill of approximately $200 a month just for reading that. Likewise, the meter on this complex here, which is, was a four-inch meter with a base price per month of about $600 per month, has been bypassed. The smallest meter they can put in, since it's a commercial structure, is a two-inch meter, so that will reduce the basic bill from $600 a month to $200 a month. Those are round figures. So I'm just guessing, but I think they took the two-inch meter out of the cemetery. But I need to add, though, that our deal with Arizona Water Company, normally there are fees associated with placement and removal of water meters. They elected to do that in no charge to the city. So I just wanted to make a public statement thanking them for being able to do that. Now, all we need from them is to get the water working in the restrooms of this building.
Yes, and it will be good to know.
And we'll be golden. So, and that's all I have for tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, sir, and particularly good news with the filling of those positions. Thank you very much. Mr. Higgins? I move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second for adjournment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We stand adjourned.
Tammy, Tammy. Tammy. Tammy.